Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to another fabulous edition of the Greater Lawrence Chamber of Commerce Chamber Chat. My name is Brad Kloffenstein, President of the Greater Lawrence Chamber. This week, we have a special guest, Sean Denny. He is a Lawrence Common Counselor. He is President of the Lawrence Parks Foundation, and he works for the Lawrence Township Trustees' Office, among other interests. So today, he is braving the elements and is joining us from the backyard. It is my sincere hope that we see a little lightning strike behind Sean's shoulder, and that will make this the most epic episode ever.
That's all. That's all that you see.
So Counselor Denny, welcome. Share with the assembled masses here some pearls of wisdom.
Oh, wow, that's a high bar.
Tell about yourself.
Well, thank you, Brad, first of all, for having me here. I really appreciate that and all the good work that the Greater Lawrence Chamber does for our community in the City of Lawrence and the township as a whole. Like you said, I kind of have a couple of different hats that I wear within the Lawrence area. I'm the At Large Lawrence, City of Lawrence Counselor, and I'm the Deputy Trustee for the Lawrence Township. Prior to that, I served on MSD Lawrence Township School Board. And, you know, my background is in education, and before that, I'm a little bit of a reformed banker. I worked for Smith Barney briefly and decided to go back into helping children with kids.
So, well, thank you for joining us. Now, you also ran for Congress once, didn't you?
I did, I did. That was, you know, I figure if you're going to jump in and run for something, let's just start there. So in 2014, I ran against Susan Brooks for District 5, and that had to do with education. There was between the both sides, and either party was really talking about teachers or education. So I just put my name in and then won the primary. And so then went on, I was like, well, now what do I do? I guess we run this campaign and, you know, keep the message moving. And 2014 was, it was a fun year. I felt I, you know, accomplished something, getting the message out. It was Marion County had the lowest voter turnout, I think, in history that year, but, you know, we, it was an enjoyable experience.
So tell us a little bit about your upbringing. If I'm not mistaken, you are a Newcastle Trojan.
Absolutely.
So give us the quick bio on Sean Denny.
Wow, you're going way back. Yeah, so I'm from originally sort of centrally eastern Indiana, Newcastle, Indiana. Then it was called Newcastle Chrysler High School. One of the largest employers in Newcastle was the Chrysler Foundry there. My father and a lot of my relatives worked in that foundry for many, many years. My dad retired from there in 2001. So graduated from there in 91 and then came to Indianapolis in 92, went to school at the University of Indianapolis. So I got my masters and my bachelors from UND. And I still call it UND. I know they changed, or U of I, they changed the name to UND, but I still slip in U of I every so often on that. And, you know, like I said, I went into banking there for a little bit and then came back to teaching.
So were you a season ticket holder for the Trojans in the Fieldhouse?
Well, I played in the marching band, so I got to be in the pep band for every single game and see everything. Well, one of the funny things, though, was when I first got my driver's license, and I think I went to Anderson to watch my first non-home basketball game when I had my driver's license, and I wondered where their real gymnasium was. I couldn't figure out why their gym didn't hold 8,000 people like ours did. So that was my first experience going somewhere where the world's largest gymnasium wasn't actually where you played the basketball games.
So now, I went to Mount Vernon High School, and I can remember in 1983, a neighbor of mine, his family was from Newcastle, and they took me to a game, and we watched Steve Alford play against Shannon Dowa. And that was the most amazing thing I had ever seen in my life, when I'd never seen 10,000 or 11,000 people at a high school game. But I mean, that was as good as any professional game I'd ever been to.
Oh, amazing. I mean, it really was. And they, you know, the town's only about 20,000 people, but half the population comes out to watch basketball. So I, for a long time, I knew that there was this sport called football. There was these other sports, soccer, because I saw the ball when I went to the store to buy my basketball. But that was all I really knew growing up was basketball, and still a big fan today. I'll watch high school basketball before I switch over to college and NBA.
So let me pivot to some of the things that you're doing now. Just talk about your work on the council. So here you are, you're a Lawrence Common Counselor. Tell us about our advantages, the things we're doing well, the things we're not doing well, and the things that you hope to accomplish on the council.
Sure. So, well, how I ended up in Lawrence, it's kind of an interesting story. So I am from, like you just said, a small town. My wife's from Washington Township, so this was kind of the, let's stay metro, but within a small-town environment. And so Lawrence is just where we ended up, and we just love the community. I think that the greatest strength is the community and the spirit that we have here within the City of Lawrence and that identity. And part of it, I guess, could be, that is something we have to work on a little bit because sometimes when you say Lawrence, as you provided in your introduction, there's really three Lawrences. There's the township, the school district, and then the city. And so sometimes when you're right on the border, folks don't know which one of those you're actually referring to. What I do within the City of Lawrence, I'm also the Chair of the Finance Committee. So right now, we're working on city budget. We should, I think that's been proposed and should be published here soon. And if you've ever worked with the State Board of Accounts and city budgeting, that's a very lengthy and interesting process. So that's a part of what's going on. And the, one of the other strengths, of course, I think, is the school district within our city, because MSD Lawrence Township does fall completely within Lawrence Township, or the City of Lawrence falls completely within MSD Lawrence Township. Been very proud of the success and what's going on with the schools.
I would like to take this opportunity to plug the Metropolitan School District of Lawrence Township for being our title sponsor for tomorrow's Greater Lawrence Chamber Annual Meeting at the Garrison, featuring Governor Holcomb. So thank you, school system. So tell me a little bit, I went to Loggers in Lawrence last Saturday. We've got a new stage. I don't know if you helped budget for that or know anything about it, but that thing is fantastic.
That is fantastic. There's a lot of exciting and new things coming along with the cultural campus, the new stage, you know, the development of the park system, a lot of activities where folks can get out and do some great things. That stage is really nice. The old one, I understood, took a little bit longer time to put together, but this new one was part of it. So I was on the parks board when we voted for that, but I believe it was the city that facilitated the entire purchase. What did you think? Did you, I mean, so you're my firsthand feedback.
Well, this was my second Loggers in Lawrence, so now I've been to two-thirds of them. I thought the event was amazing, that stage, given that it's portable, mobile, it's huge. I have no idea how we're going to be able to utilize that thing to keep it busy 52 weeks out of the year, but it's neat. So trust me, you have my pledge from the Greater Lawrence Chamber that we'll try to use it once or twice a year just on our stuff.
There we go. All right.
So a little bit, or tell us a little bit more budgeting in Lawrence. How are we financially since you sit on that committee? And how, what's our outlook going to be, or what guidance have you guys received?
So, well, thanks to our controller, Jason Finnwick. He's really done a really good job, and he takes kind of a conservative approach to managing the books. And that's been the overall approach that the committee has taken as well with the City of Lawrence and the finances. So in some communities, you know, really, we talk about COVID affecting us this year. Well, this year's tax collections doesn't start hitting the city budgets until 2022, so we have a little bit of time to plan ahead and look ahead. But we want to make sure we're setting up a good and a strong reserve if that 2022 year does take a strong hit. And that's what we're doing, you know? The city is being very conservative in its budgeting forecast to the point where maybe we're under-budgeting on some things. The potholes are still going to get filled, you know, trash is still going to get collected, the water, the sewers are still going to, all that's still going to run. But we want to make sure that we're not going out on any adventurous projects at this time until we see where things are at. And one of the, the one that's really probably going to hit us is the gas, you know, gas tax. When you go to the gas pump, you'll see a little thing there that says this much is collected in taxes. Well, during, you know, March, April, May, not a lot of people drove around for a while, so that portion of the, of our streets funding may be impacted. And we're waiting to see about property taxes, even though Indiana, you know, we had that portion with the mortgage rates, the way they were, Indiana's seen a kind of an uptick in sales, home sales. And if you've checked on Zoom, is it Zoom or Zillow? Zillow or any of these other websites? I'm not trying to plug them, just saying that you can check out a website, I guess, and see your property values. Property values have gone up, so it'll be interesting to see where we're at in, later in 2021, when the state finally compiles all those numbers. But I think as far as rating ourselves against other communities, we're in really good shape. I don't see us having to, at worst-case scenario, maybe not give a raise to some of our employees, which I hope we're able to do, but I don't foresee any layoffs or us having to cut services in any way.
So one other question about your duties with the council. So you're an At Large. How often are you contacted by people throughout Lawrence that, you know, are contacting you as opposed to their district counselor? How do you handle that? Do you consider that you represent everybody and you're just one big district of Lawrence? Or tell me the differences.
Well, yeah, you do, in some ways, it's a little bit the opposite. Sometimes I get contacted, and they'll say they've already contacted their local, you know, their district person. A lot of that has to do with the relationships that some of the other members have built with the community. But yeah, I absolutely do represent the entire city, and anytime there's a phone call, you know, I respond appropriately to that. Interestingly, the first probably six months, I got more phone calls regarding school district issues, as we saw LC, the front of Lawrence Central, and the different schools being worked on, asking questions about what was going on with the school district than I did the city. And a lot of the, but now we do get a lot more and a few different questions, and it's things to do with response time, what's this going on, what's that project? Thank you for, like you just said, the stage, these other things that are happening. Are we going to see more of that? So it seems to be more compliments and ideas for things that we're doing rather than complaints, which is a nice place to be.
Well, that's certainly better than the alternative.
And then my son came back into town. He was a 2017 LC graduate, and he wanted to know why we were telling, tearing down Lawrence Central. And so if you've driven by that, drive there, the entire front is just about missing. Well, I told him, wait another couple of years, you'll see a brand-new school, but that's an exciting project.
Funny, I've heard that same thing. All right, so let's pivot over your work on the Parks Foundation.
Correct.
Tell me how that works in conjunction with the Parks Board and the parks to go on. And so what is it you guys do? And explain to our audience kind of the separation of powers and duties on that.
Separation of powers. So you have to, I have to wear a separate hat, you know, when I do the Parks Foundation. So that part came about before I was elected to anything with the City of Lawrence. The paperwork was filed, was actually incorporated in May of last year. And then next month will be the one-year anniversary of actually the foundation having its 501(c)(3) status and up in operation. Part of that began, it's just sort of a little bit of a personal story, but it's a shared experience story. I can tell you about Brad, that, you know, my son, when he was in the sixth grade, I always told him if he wanted to play football, once he got to the sixth grade, he could play it. And so he was in soccer, kindergarten all the way through the fifth grade. Sixth grade comes along, he wants to play football, and they give us the coupon, tell us to go down to the, you know, the store and get the equipment, and I do. And I really didn't know how much some of this stuff was going to cost, but I had no idea. But we'll walk in, and the very first helmet I see was like $95 or $85, something like that, and it might as well said, "We'll break on impact." I mean, it was just a helmet. So then the pads, you know, so the next highest helmet, we're up into the $700, $800, $900. You could go all the way up for a helmet that's only going to last two or three months for a youth. They had pads, you know, that was in all this different scale. They had, you gotta get the mouthpiece, you gotta get the leg pads. Anyway, not to, long story short, we end up walking out there after I used my coupon with about $700 in equipment for him to play for just a couple of months. And then on top of that, the registration fees. So we started talking with other parents and realized that everyone else is kind of having these problems, and there's some parents that aren't playing because of the expense of some of these youth sports. And that really became the impetus, is our, the City of Lawrence really has a great youth sports program with soccer, football, Little League, you name it. You know, we really got a great, great programming going here for youth sports. But we want to make sure everybody that wants to participate township-wide is able to participate and play within our parks. And so that became the impetus, and then we thought, well, while we're at it, let's, you know, budgets are tight for everybody. What about beautification? What if that, could we talk about trails, or could we talk about, you know, anything else that affects our park and having folks involved with it? And that became the drive to get the foundation started. For about, for a short little bit, and I don't mean to dominate your conversation, but just to run through the history here, we planned with Mayor Collier to do our inaugural event in April. We're real excited about that. Then, of course, you know, mid-March there, we had COVID raise its ugly head, and every single thing that was at the Lawrence Community Parks in all of the Stewart Center, wherever it was, was canceled along with our event. So we, for a short while, we became an organization without a mission, because our mission was to support the parks, but you couldn't go to the parks. But we still wanted to stay focused on families. So right now, in a partnership with Gleaners, with the school district, and Community Health Network, Anthem, other organizations, we've began kind of a mobile food drive that we're helping some of the families that would have came out to the park, and we're passing along foods that families might need over long weekends. We're only doing that once a month, and it was by no means to replace any of the organizations that are doing it around the city, because there's a lot of other organizations that do the same thing. But it was something I thought we could step up and do, and our board thought we could step up and do and help out. And I don't know, does that answer your question a little bit on how we got started, the Parks Foundation?
Yes. So I will ask, what are your big, long-term goals moving forward?
So this is one where we kind of wear two hats, but in some ways, they come together. So on this, you know, the long term, I would love to see us getting out to the parks and, you know, beautifying it, more folks that want to go to the parks going out, because that can be an economic driver of helping our property values, whenever you get these really set up, and families love coming out to the parks. When you set up the park map, you'll see within the City of Lawrence that south of Pendleton Pike, as it runs, you know, kind of diagonal through our city, we really don't have one over around the 46th Midhofer area, and there's not really one up in the southern Geist area, a park up there. And so it'd be nice if we might be able to get like a micro park and maybe a larger park down that way. I think five years out, it would be great if the Parks Foundation was able to raise some funds and purchase land or sponsor some type of event that allowed us to develop a park in those couple areas. And the other long term, of course, by that point, if anybody, there's a family or a child that wants to go out and play soccer, that wants to play football, that wants to golf, play basketball, they're able to do it. And basketball was the other kind of long-term goal. If you think about our parks, there's not a basketball goal in any of them. I can't think of another park system that does not have a basketball goal in any of the parks. So that's one of the conversations we're kind of having, is how do we get some basketball and some courts built within our city park system.
Nice. All right, I've got more questions, but I want to take an opportunity now to open it up to the people that are here with us so that they can ask you questions. There any questions from the assembled masses? Russ?
I'm worried. This is, I'm sure they have some good questions.
Now, I wanted to ask, you know, when you're looking at other places where you can purchase additional land for parks or whatever, what's the criteria? What goes into that? And it sounds like you've got ideas that could come fruition over the course of the next few years, which I've got to believe is a little challenging, though, because you've got a lot of development going on, too.
So the criteria really is, because we're landlocked, is what's available in some ways, and how can we utilize that? We've, the easier spot is along the southern area, because along 46th Street, that's still undeveloped inside of Marion County, if you can believe it, on the southern side. And when you get into the areas in Geist, it becomes a little bit more complicated. So is there areas that somebody might be willing to donate? Is there land that could be purchased? All of those, those ideas come into play. And I think it's going to take more community conversations, because this is really just, and ideas like yourself, that asking those questions, because this is, this is really at the front tip of that, that idea and exploring out the concept. So I think, you know, using the foundation is just a way to see if we could explore and get some larger dollars as we go along.
It's always a good thing.
Yes, absolutely.
Other questions for Counselor Denny while he's here? All right, then I'm going to ask another question. You also work for the Trustees' Office. Tell us about what your areas of responsibility are. Tell us what the Trustees' Office does, because I'm not sure everybody even knows that. And then tell us about all these cool little cemeteries around Lawrence Township.
Okay, so Brad, you broke up for just a second, and I heard, "Tell us about," and that was it.
Oh, huh. Well, let me start off. So tell us about what the Trustees' Office does first, what your responsibility is within the Trustees' Office, and then about all these cool little cemeteries that you guys are responsible for around Lawrence Township.
Oh, yeah, so just this past weekend, I'll start at your last question there. Just this last weekend, trustee Tally was out and doing some beautification work with the Lawrence Police Department's Explorers Post 160. And there's a 13 or 14, I think it's 14 cemeteries within Lawrence Township that are the original, some of the original pioneers, original folks that migrated this way in the early 1800s. And a lot of these cemeteries are, there's no longer any lots available, you know, in it, they're just older cemeteries, and so the Trustees' Office has assumed sort of maintenance and responsibilities on those. So I'm a historian, that was what I taught, and so it's always interesting for me to go to some of those and see the names and think about, you know, what their life might have been back in 1840, 1812, whatever it was, you know, 1912, when they were here. My family does have some connections in Marion County going back into that time period, so I always try to put those two things together. But your first couple of questions, so the trustee is responsible for a couple of different things, you know, helping out with rental assistance, helping out with poverty relief within the township. So really with COVID, and a lot of folks losing their jobs, losing their income, this has been a really very busy time for us over these last three or four months, and to the point where our Township Board actually allowed us to hire another case manager to handle the inflow of folks. So we've, so far this last couple of months, we've given out close, or provided close to $200,000 in rental and utility assistance and burial assistance to folks within township that didn't have income or were in some dire straits and unable to provide for those services themselves. My role there is kind of to manage that side of it, to manage the case, the clients as they come in the door, make sure that they go through the process correctly, and supervise our case managers as they, as they meet with folks. We're in an interesting spot right now. We've, we're 100% online, 100% virtual, so all of our clients are appointment-only over the phone, and then you meet your case manager. You can do like a Zoom meeting like we're doing now, or you can do it totally over the phone.
So when do you guys, do you have plans to go back into the office, or is that just kind of perpetually on hold until there's a vaccine?
You know, it's probably, I think we're very innovative. I'm going to say JP Morgan Chase copied from us, because after we did that, I saw on CNBC, JP Morgan Chase said they've gone back, they've gone to work from home and may not be coming back for a while. And we had just had a conversation a couple of weeks before that, that we're work from home, we come into the office as needed, we come in to print our paper, paperwork out, our applications, but we'll probably stay work from home for a while, at least for another six, seven months. My wife works for IUPY, and they sent her home March 10th, a few days before the school district did, and they've told her at least August of '21 before she goes back.
Wow.
And part of it is to do with, you know, the client, it works out well for the client, for the folks that are needing assistance, and it is a little bit of a cost savings for the taxpayer for us to do it this way. So if it works out, we may end up keeping this permanently.
So what are the biggest needs that you're seeing that people are coming to you with? And has that been a shift from a year ago?
Um, yeah, so some of the bigger needs is, it is rental assistance now that the moratoriums are starting to fall off. We're seeing folks come in that maybe got a little bit behind, got two a month or two months, and they're not able to do one of the wrapping programs or didn't qualify. So how do they get completely caught up? The utilities is kind of another spot now that we're moving into winter, making sure that gas and electric bill can stay on. And again, the Trustees' Office is sort of the emergency last resort space. So when they've come into our doors, when they come into our building, they've already gone to the United Way or should have, gone to other different places to see if they qualify there. And we do work with those other community partners to see what resources all of us are able to put together to help everyone out. At the end of the day, we want to make sure everybody has a place to live, heat's on, the water's running, and they have food to eat. And so that's, that's sort of the whole goal. I should throw in, and I missed this a second ago, and I'll be error for skipping past it, but the cupboard is also a partnership through Community Health Network that the Trustees' Office does, and that's down on Shadland and Pendleton Pike within the township.
Very nice. So other questions for Counselor Denny while he's with us?
Easy enough.
Exactly. So Counselor Denny, before I let you go, I'm going to ask parting thoughts, pearls of wisdom. I think we all, we all watched that debate and were largely disgusted by it. Where do you see, what are the, I'll tell you, one of the things I love about Lawrence, it is not real partisan, at least within the city, and everybody seems to get along, and I love that, and I wish that that could carry over to other places. What are just your thoughts on life?
So I'm real excited, because I have heard comments that this is one of the better councils that the city has seen in a while, not knocking others, it just makes me very proud to be part of that. And because we're avoiding the partisan work that you're kind of talking about, we're sitting down and trying to discuss the issues of the city, not which issues benefit whom better, and from the mayor through, throughout the entire council, that's something that we've all focused on doing. So that's been something I think I'm really proud of. And, you know, as far as the larger problems, the debates and those things, I can't really get it solved those, so I'll just stick with what I can work on. But I think if, whatever way you want to vote, if you get out and vote, we really need the turnout. I think it's important that here in Lawrence, the LACC, or what's their old Craig Middle School, is one of the highest turnout areas in Marion County when they have the early voting center. So we're a good, we're a group that likes to get out and vote, so make sure we do that. And I think the census is about to wrap up, so if you've not completed that, we want to make sure that you get counted, especially on the southern side of the city or the southern side of the township in that 46235 zip code area. I think that part of the city has not had the same level of attention to the census that other parts have, and so getting out there and getting those things responded to.
Well, Counselor Denny.
Your opinion always matters. I think that would be what I would leave it with, Brad, not to cut you off.
Just mine personally?
Yours and everybody else's, that, you know, if you live in the City of Lawrence, your opinion matters, so, you know, feel free to call, email, all of that, and we'll address what your concern is.
Well, Counselor, thank you very much for joining us this week. Thank you all who are here in attendance. Would also like to remind everyone that tomorrow, Thursday, October 1st, is our annual membership luncheon, sponsored by Metropolitan School District of Lawrence Township. Thank you very much for being the title sponsor of that event. Governor Holcomb will be here, and it will be an in-person event. I'm not sure he's done a whole lot of in-person events since all this hit, so I feel kind of special for that. It should be a great day, so thank you all for joining us. Next week, our guest is going to be Spencer Valentine. He is from the Central Indiana Regional Transit Authority, and he's going to be talking about moving people around in central Indiana and how that works within the region and beyond just Marion County. So be looking for the invitation to come out on that. So again, thank you all for being here, and we'll see you all next week.
Thank you, Brad.
Brad, before you disappear, is there still availability to come to the lunch tomorrow? Brad, before you disappear, is there still availability to come to the lunch tomorrow?
Yes, but you have to do it in the next, like, half hour.
Okay. I tried to go and do something online and it didn't take. So, I'll call you behind here, okay?
Yep. Call me right after this. So.
Okay, thank you.
We'll make it happen.
Hey, Sean, before you go, hey, say hi to Amber from me. I haven't seen either of you in years. But, you know, being an old radio guy, our paths crossed on more than a couple of occasions.
Is that right? Okay, I definitely will.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Oh, and we also extended the cruise in. We're going to be doing it every Wednesday through October, weather permitting. Looks like we're going to have a nice fall, so be sure to come out for that. So, everybody, take care. We'll see you next week.
Take care.